So I have a couple of practical issues to highlight. We have no fire drill planned tonight, so if there is a fire alarm, please make your way out of the building in a calm and orderly fashion, as guided by staff. People with mobility issues should gather in the foyer on the left-hand side as you leave the chamber near the balustrade, where assistance will be provided. Toilets at the far end of the corridors either side of the chamber, ledgers to the left as you leave, gents to the right. May I ask that if you have to leave and return to the council chamber during a meeting, you ensure that the doors do not slam after you. If anyone is speaking, can you please make sure you speak clearly into the microphone so that everyone can hear? I receive apologies to the evening councillors Everett and Wally. So before we get on to the main business, I just wanted to make a few announcements about things that both myself and the sheriff have been getting up to on your behalf. So far this year, actually, we've done somewhere in the region of 220 or so engagements and there's no let-up at the end of the civic year. But since the last five or six weeks since I was last here at full council, I've had a visit to Nobby Sad and that was particularly interesting. For those who don't know, Norwich is twinned with Nobby Sad and we have been since 1989. And I was able to attend there with David Fulmer, who was Lord Mayor at the time signing our twinning agreement with Nobby Sad. I was also able to attend with Peter Beckley. Now, Peter and his late work Diana received the honorary freedom of the city of Nobby Sad for their work in fostering the cooperation. And it was a really interesting visit to meet with local partners that came from cities around Nobby Sad and find out firsthand just how important Nobby Sad sees the relationship between their city and Norwich. So it was really interesting. I also attended, during apprenticeships week, the Norfolk Apprenticeships Awards and I was able to present the award on behalf of investors in people. It was really gratifying to see the amount of work that employers are putting in to support apprentices at all levels. That then dovetailed nicely with inviting some members of the city council's Unison branch to launch Love Union Week in the Lord Mayor's parlour and hear about their work. On a lighter note, the sheriff and I were delighted to accept the invitation from the mayor of Kingsley to attend the opening of Kingsley Mart on Valentine's Day. For those who don't know, Kingsley Mart has been going for either 400 or 800 years, depending on which charter you believe. And the site of various mayors from around the local region in dodgems is one that unless you've experienced it, you wouldn't believe. But that then, back to more sort of serious things, I was pleased to receive an invitation to the Open Doors Cafe, which provided food and companionship on a regular basis. And it was great to talk to those people who've enjoyed their lunches and the volunteers on behalf of the whole community and the city. On March 1st, continuing the traditions that have been going for over 700 years, I presided a report of mayoralty in this council chamber where we welcomed some new admissions to the Freeman of Norwich. And finishing off, yesterday was Commonwealth Day, so we had a flag raising ceremony where I had a group of youngsters from Angel Road School come in and they asked some very good questions here in the chamber. And a friend of mine had produced some Lord Mayor buns with the civic creation and the children made much enjoyed those. And yesterday evening, I was delighted to accept an invitation to attend dinner with members of the grand table in Norwich. So that concludes my announcements. I've also been told about two councillors who are standing down at the elections in May this year. So I'd like to begin with thanking councillor Vaughan Thomas and councillor Stonehart, if you'd like to say a few words, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yes, indeed, I'd like to say a few words and to thank and celebrate the work of councillor Vaughan Thomas, whom this will be his final meeting as he prepares to stand down in the coming election in May. I know that from across this chamber, Vaughan will be hugely missed. He's a man that encapsulates the decency, kindness, consideration and good judgment that we expect of all councillors, but that in Vaughan always exudes. Since his election in 2015, from across, Vaughan served both as cabinet member but also notably as our Lord Mayor during the toughest two years of this council and our city has experienced in over 100 years. Vaughan and the team took us through COVID-19, chairing meetings and ensuring the business and function of this council was delivered democratically in the most difficult, stressful and sometimes dangerous of times. He did an amazing job with his quiet, reassuring and calm way of working, encouraging all members and officers that we could not only beat the pandemic but come through with a COVID-19 recovery plan, which helped to steer us to a better future in so many ways. Vaughan is a proud socialist, trade unionist and a man who through his working life has dedicated himself through his work as a senior welfare rights officer, always to stand up for the oppressed, battle hard to right wrongs and be the friend of those with the least power in our city. He used these values in his work as a cabinet member to make real policy changes and the fact that we have the council tax reduction scheme, a strong social inclusion strategy, strong relationships with advice providers and a Norwich Real Living Wage campaign flourishing is a testament to his political ability to use power for a purpose and always to put people first. Through this work, he's changed thousands of lives and made life a bit better during these hard 14 years. And when I say hard 14 years, you know what I'm referring to, don't you, Vaughan? Personally speaking, Lord Mayor, I am very sad that Vaughan is now leaving us. I'll miss seeing him in this building and his work in this council. But I know that he will always be a friend of this institution and of our city, always be committed to righting the wrongs of our society and never ceasing his crusade to stand up for the underdog and champion the needs of working people. He represents the very best of our labour movement and this will never cease. So Vaughan, it's been an absolute pleasure. Enjoy your retirement. Thank you again for your service and support and on behalf of this council and every elected member, thank you again for what you have done. You're an absolute star.
Vaughan, just going to come and present you with something on behalf of the city. I don't know if anyone wants to take a photo, so I'm going off script here. We've got a little... All right. Metaphorically to go off scripts. We've also heard that councillor Rachel Everett is standing down. I'd like to invite councillor Davies to say a few words, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor Everett has actually sent me a few words that she'd like to read out. Unfortunately, she's very toxic affection. I've been honoured to represent the Laken Award. I've worked with residents to help them get their views across on many issues, fly dipping, council housing and notably Sir Monty's housing at Neverwood Green. I will miss the collaborative relationship I've had with Laken and residents and my councillor colleagues and I would like to thank everyone for their support over the years. Thank you. I'd like to also extend our support and best wishes to Vaughan and his retirement.
I also have one of these for councillor Everett, so I'm just going to get it out of the chair and pop it down to you. So now going to go back to councillor Stonehart. Councillor Stonehart, could I ask you to announce the Lord Mayor and Sheriff for the next civic year, please?
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. So the Lord Mayor for the next civic year will be Viv Thomas and the Sheriff will be Cyril Gill Islam.
Thank you very much for that. So we now move on to the main agenda items. Item two, declarations of interest. Do any members have any declarations of interest to make on items on the agenda? No, thank you very much. So we move on to item three, which is questions from the public. Questions from the public. Could I ask members of the public who are reading their questions to please stick to the questions as submitted and as I've said, ask them, make sure you're using the microphone clearly. So we've received three public questions. The first is to Mr George Heaney. Mr Heaney, would you please ask your question?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. My question is, following the withdrawal of western homes from regenerating Anglia Square and the consequent loss of significant investment in Norwich, can the leader comment on what is needed to finally ensure this ever blind to our city is removed and new homes, jobs and investments can be delivered?
Thank you. Councillor Stonehart, would you please give your reply?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you for your question, Mr Heaney. The council is very committed to seeing this site redeveloped. We recognise that Anglia Square is a vital part of the local community in the north city centre and provides an important meeting place for people with affordable shops and many independent businesses and social enterprises. We need to be sure that our next steps make a real difference to bringing this site forward and we can't do that on our own. We will work with the existing site owners and of course the local community to look at every option available to us. We're engaging with the Secretary of State and other government agencies. These third-party partners are best placed to help us deliver this city centre regeneration and offer funding to de-risk and develop the development of the site. The right development partner will also be key to unlocking this site and we will work to attract a wide range of people who are potentially interested in working with us. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Mr Heaney, you're allowed one supplementary question. Do you have a supplementary question?
No, thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. The second question is from Mr Chris Smith. Mr Smith, would you please ask your question?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So as an active trade unionist and president of Norwich Trades Council, I'm impressed by the work of the city council in promoting efforts to build a better, more inclusive and work a friendly local economy despite its limited powers. Leadership on the real living wage, Good Economy Commission and enhancing the terms and conditions for workers through the new wholly owned company's raw actions in a positive direction. Can the cabinet member comment on what further steps they feel are needed to radically enhance this agenda further within the local city economy?
Thank you. Councillor Giles, would you please give your reply?
Thank you, Chris, for the question. Thank you, Lord Mayor. The Living Wage Places Action Plan commits to making Norwich a living wage city, a place that values its labour force and seeks to ensure workers are paid enough to live a good life, free from financial anxiety. The council with partners continues work to increase the number of accredited employers within Norwich with a target of 110 by the end of the next year. Predictions are this will represent approximately 14,750 employees, that's a target, working for a real living wage employer. The council recognises the need to focus its resources on the local economy as set out in its new corporate plan. We are Norwich, a prosperous Norwich. We want to put good work and sustainable and inclusive economic growth at the forefront of our work. Our aim is to work in partnership with businesses and trade unions to enable a thriving, successful economy that is creative, innovative, inclusive and environmentally sustainable. We will seek to make Norwich a great place to live, work, learn and visit, where everyone shares in success. Working with partners and businesses, this will involve, for example, diversifying our economy to deliver good jobs for all and enabling people to maximise their household incomes. Ensuring everyone can gain the right skills for a changing economy and there is support for people to get into work. Protecting commercial spaces to support diverse sectors, entrepreneurialism and job creation and making the real living wage the law, not the exception. Ultimately, we want to see an economy that is more inclusive, adapted to a net zero carbon world and provides opportunities for all the people of Norwich to live a good life. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Smith, you're allowed one supplementary question. Do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you for that reply, councillor Giles. The question and answer demonstrates that the only root branch reform of employment law is needed to tip the balance back in favour of workers and only doing that will fully suffice in achieving what we want. On that basis, as a Labour councillor, will you commit to Labour's New Deal for Working People and ensuring it's actively delivered in the event of a change of government?
Councillor Giles, would you please give your reply?
Thank you for the supplementary question. Angela Rayner, Labour Party Deputy Leader, has set out a radical new deal for working people, which forms part of the Labour Party's policy programme ratified at Labour Party Conference last autumn. The Labour Party has pledged to bring forward a Labour Rights Bill within 100 days of forming a government if we are successful at the next general election. A key element of this new deal will be establishing a fair wages agreement in social care, a sector where workers work hard, providing a critical service for sadly often poor pay and insecure allies. Wages councils provided a critical role throughout most of the 20th century in providing a floor of fair pay and alternative benefits in sectors with weak trade union membership rates. It is hoped that a fair wages agreement in social care will similarly lead to the voluntary machinery being established to promote and encourage effective sectoral collective bargaining, building on this floor. If the fair pay agreement is successful in social care, a Labour government would seek to roll out these FPAs across other sectors facing similar issues. The Labour Party doesn't want to see strikes. Workers do not want strikes. Strikes represent a failure of collective bargaining. However, we recognise that statutory immunity from liability and all other industrial action is a critical tool for the arsenal, workers and trade unions. The last decade has seen statutory immunities for industrial action limited disproportionately, egregiously breaching our legal obligations under the European Social Charter and the International Labour Organisation. Angela Rayner has been clear that a Labour government would repeal both the Strikes Minimum Services Act 2023 and the Trade Union Act 2016. The Labour Party believes the Trade Union Act 2016 imposes disproportionate notice and rebaloting obligations on trade unions, particularly in the line of the continued failure of the government to introduce regulations for e-baloting. The 40% majority threshold for industrial action in important public services undermines democracy by allowing abstentions to be falsely counted as votes against action. The opt-in political levy obligation on trade unions affiliated to the Labour Party undermines trade union autonomy and is a cynical measure to starve the Labour Party of trade union funding. The cumulative impact of the new minimum services and work notice obligations exhibit an authoritarian strand in the current Conservative Party's ideology, which Hayek would have balked at, let alone the labour movement. A Labour government would also provide critical reforms to individual employment law. By moving towards a single worker status, this would provide what are currently limbie workers, many of whom work in positions of subordination in the gig economy, with the critical employment rights they are currently deprived from enjoying. A Labour government would give workers the right to reasonable notice of any changes in shifts or working time. We will end the increase in practice of dismissal and re-engagement, better known as fire and re-hire. We will work with the Low Pay Commission to ensure the minimum wage is a real living wage, taking into account the cost of living. And we will repeal any legislation passed by this government to reintroduce employment tribunal force, a measure previously ruled as contrary to the rule of law by the Supreme Court. However, a strong Labour government will require a strong Labour-led Norwich City council. This council and our partners stand ready and willing to work with a Labour government, drawing on our experience of working with employers to help them overcome the barriers to paying the real living wage. Over the next civic year, this Labour administration is committed to working with trade unions and businesses to draw up a fine city employers charter, which will hopefully be complementing the work of a Labour government. Many thanks for the question. Thank you for attending.
Thank you, councillor Giles, for that very comprehensive answer to an off-the-cuff supplementary question. And now we move over to the third question is from Miss Alison Leddington. Miss Leddington, would you please ask your question?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The ongoing audit of parks and green spaces has raised considerable concerns that the council intends to cove smaller parks or schedule them for sale and redevelopment. What assurances can be given that this is not the case?
Thank you. Councillor Giles, would you please give your reply?
Thank you for coming to the meeting, Alison. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sorry. I'm sorry these suspicions have arisen. I can assure you that not only our city parks but also our smaller community parks will be safe under the stewardship of this Labour-led council. This council announced a total capital investment package of just under £10 million in our Parks and Open Spaces at Budget Council last month. What the audit will do is highlight the existing quality and value of our parks and open spaces and shake proposals on how they can be effectively managed, maintained and where relevant, improved in the future. This will be reflected in the draft Parks and Open Spaces Strategy and Investment Plan scheduled for June cabinet. At an early stage in the production of the strategy, we held a consultation away day at a football club with over 120 delegates representing 60 organisations, including the Norfolk Wildlife Trust, the Norwich Bead, Friends Groups, residents associations, Norfolk County Council and many environmental organisations. The final strategy will be subject to a public consultation with a roadshow of in-person, onsite engagement events in communities across the city with friends groups to maximise feedback and input from residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Miss Leddington, you're allowed one supplementary question. Do you have a supplementary question?
I think actually it's already been answered.
Thank you very much. So we now move on to petitions. We've received one petition. The petition is being presented by Miss Leslie Graham. Miss Graham, would you please present your petition?
Thank you. We've been watching in horror the events unfolding in Gaza since October, which according to the provisional ruling of the International Court, could plausibly amount to genocide... to the provisional ruling of the International Court could plausibly amount to genocide under international law. While local councils have limited leverage over events in Israel, Palestine and other places where war crimes are committed, they do have control over their investments. Campaign Against the Arms Trade demonstrates that arms companies are prepared to do deals even with states involved in the most egregious human rights violations and that many governments, including the UK, actively facilitate such deals. The least Norwich City Council can do to show solidarity with Palestinian people and with victims of violent suppression and occupation around the globe is to ensure that none of its investments help finance weapons that are likely to contribute to serious human rights violations and war crimes. As a city of sanctuary and longstanding member of Mayors for Peace, an organisation committed to promoting world peace, the council has a moral duty to do all it can to make sure its investments do not contribute to death and suffering. We therefore ask the council, one, to screen its investments portfolio and counterparties' list, to establish which of the institutions and instruments the council is currently invested in, which ones have an exclusion clause for the arms industry and to establish where such clauses exist, what exactly is their reach. Two, to seek specialist treasury management advice on investment opportunities that screen out investment in the arms industry to the highest degree. Three, to report to council, based on the above, a strategy for adoption for ensuring within the shortest possible timeframe that none of the council's investments could directly or indirectly help fund the arms industry. And four, to use its influence to ask that the above steps are also taken by the Norfolk Pension Fund and that opportunities are investigated for investing purposefully in sectors that seek to facilitate positive social change, for example by addressing the transition to net zero.
Thank you very much.
I have five minutes, don't I?
Well, is to present the petition as submitted to council, which you've done.
I have a bit more to say.
Is it directly related to the petition?
It really is, yes. Thank you. It's a difficult time to talk about war and peace and all the more essential for being so. Many people have stood up to say, not in my name, when atrocities are being committed. When we marched against invading Iraq, we hated being taken to war on a line and when we march for a ceasefire now, we hate to see the mass killings. Are you, as councillors, with the majority of people everywhere who want to stop the killing? We know it's difficult to have a hundred percent clean portfolio within the choice of triple A rated investment options, but we wouldn't be alone. West Midlands Council pension has divested from cluster bonds and East Sussex from Elbit Arms Company and some universities have gone farther, such as SOAS and St Andrews. Or would we rather argue that the council is struck for cash and the amounts are small? Well, yes, they are, but they're part of something huge. We could claim that we're a drop in the ocean. Well, yes, we are, but the ocean is made of drops. Everyone who's lost something knows a bit about grief. It's hard and I'd like us to take the time I have remaining to imagine dealing with multiple griefs while being bombed, starved and displaced and living in rubble, not knowing who's underneath it and in fear of the next attack.
Thank you for that. Councillor Kendrick, would you like, councillor Stoddard? Councillor Stoddard, would you like to present your petition? No, no, I'll do the physical receiving. You can respond to the petition as received. Thank you.
Former councillor Graham, pleased to see you here. Thank you for your petition.
Thank you, councillor Stoddard. Miss Graham, if you'd like to approach the front, I'll come down and receive the petition from you. Thank you. It was brought to my attention during item three that there were some members of the public that arrived at the meeting after it had started. So we need to see if we can accommodate any of those in the council chamber, given the capacity arrangements we have in place here. So if we have a brief pause, obviously, about making that happen. Thank you. Twenty first of February.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Before we move.
Thank you. Called by councillor Galvin to second the minutes.
Seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. All those in favour, please indicate. Against? Abstentions? No, that's carried, thank you. So we now move on to item five, which is questions to cabinet members. There are twenty nine questions of members of the council to cabinet members, of which notice has been given in accordance with provisions of part three of the constitution. A copy will be made available on the council's website. Members who have asked questions are permitted to put a supplementary question to the cabinet member. Just have a brief pause while these members of the public take their seat.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Question two, councillor Driver, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, Lord Mayor. Part of my question's already been answered by the public question coming in our hearts as well, so we're grateful that it's brought in by the public. Can I just ask the cabinet member, what extra expenses will be put into Lakeland? I understand this is coming off the top of my head to know about something like thirteen parks and open spaces, I can speak off the top of my head in Lakeland, which are all really well used. Can I ask what maintenance and repair and money might be spent in Lakeland this year?
Thank you. Councillor Giles, would you give your reply, please?
Thank you, councillor Driver. We've just approved funding for the resurfacing of the cycle speedway in Hertford Park. In the twenty five, twenty six financial year, there will be play area upgrades to Jubilee Park, Lee Bridges Park and Netherwood Park, Netherwood Green, rather, and then in the following financial year, an upgrade to the play area at Hertford Park. In the medium term, we have aspirations under the emerging park strategy, given that Lakeland is one of two areas in the city which is, you know, probably two bus journeys away from a large city park if you don't drive. We have got aspirations to do a more significant upgrade to one of the community parks in Lakeland and Tuxwood. We don't have the funding for that at this stage, but we are actively exploring funding sources to be able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Question three, councillor Huntley, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, Lord Mayor, I do. Thank you for your answer, councillor Jones. In your opinion, is there anything more the council could be doing to engage with faith communities in the city and to promote community cohesion?
Thank you. Councillor Jones, would you give your reply, please?
Thank you for supplementary. Yes, I think sort of timely that also we've got motion on the agenda tonight that's highlighting the idea to set up a working group to bring together representatives of faith communities because I think it's really important that we listen to their voice and understand that the experiences of faith communities in our city and the challenges they're facing, particularly at a time of the rise of, we're seeing increasing far-right political rhetoric and as we, I think, move towards a general election, as the right is scrambling for, I think, will become more and more aggressive. So I think the more we listen and engage and actually ask communities what they need is important and that's something that I hope will have full support of this chamber tonight when I bring motion forward. And that will then tie into the work of groups we have, such as the Safe for Norwich Partnership, where we work closely with the police and other organisations about promoting community safety. But I think we need to look at particular groups who probably are experiencing greater challenges at the moment, such as faith groups in the city and taking that forward. So I look forward to being able to speak to that later this evening.
Thank you. Question four, councillor Susanne, do you have a supplementary question, please?
Yes, I do, thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, councillor Giles. From reading your written response, it is abundantly clear that working with probation service has led to both real enhancement for communities across Norwich, but also the crucial rehabilitation of people and important skills training provided too. I know that partnership working is vital and will you commit to ensure the council keeps working with the partners we have currently developed, but also a wider range of other voluntary organisations as we seek to further enhance the quality of life for residents across communities we represent? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Giles, would you give your reply, please?
Thank you. Thank you for the supplementary. Yes, I will commit to continuing our relationship with the probation service with the Community Payback Scheme. It provides valuable rehabilitation, skills and training opportunities for those that have committed criminal offences. In terms of more broadly, in terms of working with volunteer groups, we've streamlined the green space permissions policy across the council to make it easier for community groups to take on certain raised beds or areas within our council estates. They may want to start community gardens, for example, and happy to explore and discuss other options such like. Thank you.
Thank you. Question five, councillor Vaughan Thomas, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, I have, thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, councillor Jones, for your written reply. It's a pleasure, on my last council meeting, to see the next phase of investment and regeneration being pursued by this Labour-led city council. Thinking of the new homes which have been delivered since 2015 in my ward, whether at Pointers Field, Hansa Close or King's Arms, all of them have been environmentally friendly and examples of cutting-edge council housing. Do you believe that what is proposed in Mire Cross will be in keeping with this great Labour tradition, particularly as you celebrate the 100th anniversary of council housing in Mire Cross this year?
Thank you. Councillor Jones, would you give your reply, please?
I'd say I'm very proud that they will continue that tradition and I think they're going to be amazing homes. I look forward to it, it's being taken forward to planning and I hope that people have seen the CGI video that's available, it's been in the press and on our own website. It's an exciting opportunity and I think we continue to develop and look at new technologies when they come forward and we're always looking about how we produce the best housing for our residents and I hope that that approach that we take as a council can be adopted across sectors because it's not just about the housing we produce, it needs to be housing that's available for everyone. So yes, totally, and we will continue to look at what we can do to make high-quality housing for our residents.
Thank you. Councillor Viv Thomas, would you, do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, councillor Fortin McAllister, for your written reply. Can you comment on why such a high number of businesses achieve a satisfactory score or above and how this compares with other areas? Thank you.
Thank you. Would you give your reply, please, councillor?
Thanks, councillor Thomas. So obviously, it would be really easy for us to say that we want to deliver good services well, it would be ultimately a sign of an unambitious council, but we're an ambitious council. We don't want to just do the bare minimum. The national average for places achieving satisfactory or above is ninety one percent compared to our ninety five percent. The national average for five stars is thirty eight percent compared to our fifty percent. Ultimately, this is achieved because our food safety team, when they are undertaking these visits, are constantly speaking with the business owners, trying to ensure that they get to the higher outputs, get to the higher hygiene ratings, rather than just undertaking the inspection quickly in a standard manner which would ensure that the box was ticked. Because what's important to us is the health of people of Norwich. As a trade union official, I've seen the types of situations where my members have been, suffered from food poisoning and they've ultimately had to undertake things like ill health retirement because they've developed ME. It's something which actually is fundamental to people's expectations when they eat in our city. So I'm incredibly pleased of our food hygiene team and commend their good work.
Thank you. Question seven, councillor Maguire, do you have a supplementary question? Councillor Maguire, could you use your microphone, please?
I still do, Lord Mayor. So thank you very much, councillor Jones, for your written response. I do know from meeting constituents who've received the Let NCC tenancy, just what a difference it makes. I'm also interested in what are the benefits for landlords of using the scheme and whether we can promote this still further.
Councillor Jones, would you give your reply, please?
Pretty surprising for me to talk about something that's good for landlords, it's normally my favourite topic, but I suppose if we're talking about actually this, it's important to get landlords on board because this is about providing another source of housing that helps us rehab people who are on our housing waiting list. So it's in terms of for a landlord, Let NCC ensures a guaranteed rent, whether the property's occupied or not, there's an optional repairs and maintenance service, there's a low management fee, there's expert advice and information. And fundamentally, as a landlord, they have the chance of being part of breaking the cycle homelessness. Actually, it's not about private sector housing that's exploitative, but it's Let NCC. This is about affordable housing for people. So I think that's really crucial and I would encourage landlords, if they've got a conscience, this is a really positive way to let out a property.
Thank you. Question eight, councillor Padda, do you have a supplementary question?
I do, thanks. Thank you, councillor Giles. Could you please set out what projects the Love Norwich Community Grants have funded to date?
Thank you. Councillor Giles?
Thank you, councillor Padda. The Love Norwich Community Grants have funded five schemes so far to date. The first of those I already mentioned in my supplementary to councillor Driver, which was the resurfacing of the cycle speedway at Hertford Park, which is of course in your ward. A second in your ward is we've funded a safe outdoor space for the charity Get Me Out These Four Walls in Lakeland, which works with mothers that are experiencing postnatal depression and... which works with mothers that are experiencing postnatal depression and social isolation issues after pregnancy. We've provided some funding for some arts murals in the Suffolk Square area. We've provided funding for raised beds for the Civic Gardeners Community Group in Mile Cross. And we've provided funding to the Island Community Group for enhancements to the community gardens in West Bottington. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Question nine, I can't see councillor Pique. I'm sorry. Blinded councillor Pique, apologies.
I'm over here, Lord Mayor. Now I'm further to have supplementary, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Apologies for not being able to see. Question 10, councillor Prinsley, do you have a supplementary question?
I do, Lord Mayor. It's really positive that the council is developing a plan to help the city meet its ambitious 2045 net zero target. But it is clear that this goal can't be met by the council alone taking care of it. Can you further expand on what the council's role is versus who else needs to be involved in this journey?
Thank you. Councillor Hampton, would you give your reply, please?
Thank you, councillor Prinsley, for both your questions. And yes, you're absolutely right, this is a plan that the council is producing and taking a lead on. But it is clear that to reach net zero as a city as a whole by 2045, there are partners and others who are going to be required to act too. It's not something we can achieve by ourselves. So the Norwich Climate Action Plan will be looking at how the council can lead, enable and coordinate climate action. As mentioned in my original written answer, the Norwich Climate Commission are being consulted throughout the development of the plan. And at this relatively early stage, a key area they're giving advice on is what the scope of the plan should be, including how we get that balance right between largely putting emphasis and resourcing to things we can deliver or influence, while at the same time creating a full and honest picture of what reaching net zero for the city will entail overall, which will require some changes, which we have a more limited ability to deliver. And also feedback from the initial early consultation, informal consultation that's been going on with members of the public will help give us a steer about how to get that balance right. We have a key role as a council to play with regards to leading by example with our own estate and cutting our own operational emissions. Taking housing as an example, which is important, given domestic emissions are the biggest source of emissions in Norwich. We need to deliver on our ambitious commitment to retrofit our own stock, not just for the benefits that brings directly, but also because of its importance in the wider context of strengthening the net zero supply chain in Norwich and enabling more extensive citywide decarbonisation. But there will be areas which require engagement with or maybe lobbying of partners. So transport, the second largest source of emissions in the city, Norfolk County Council is the highways authority. So we'll need to be working in partnership with them to promote active and sustainable transport in the city, while being clear at the same time what our own vision is and holding them to account if that's not being met. And to wrap up, as ever, I'll point out that there does also need to be an increase in ambition nationally to make sure we have the power and resource available to go as far and fast as we can towards net zero for Norwich. And to that end, a general election can't come soon enough.
Question 11, councillor Mike Sands, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, I do, thank you, Lord Mayor. Moving forward, how is the future redevelopment of Anglia Square reflected in the corporate plan?
Councillor Star, would you give your reply, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you councillor Sands for your supplementary question. So thinking about Anglia Square, the policy for the site promotes high-density, housing-led, mixed-use redevelopment of the square site, and by that I mean shopping centre, which some people talk of, talk of when they talk about it. I mean the entire site and the surrounding vacant land. Redevelopment proposals would also need to include retailing, employment, community and leisure facilities. Regeneration of Anglia Square is also intended to be the catalyst for substantial investment in and further regeneration of the wider northern city centre. As a result, the whole of the northern city centre area, as defined in the plan, is identified as a strategic regeneration area, so it does actually help enormously in terms of the future development.
Thank you. Question 12, councillor Haynes, do you have a supplementary question?
I do, Lord Mayor. Could you define in due course, please, because it seems like a really important strategy, really key to get done quickly. And I'm not sure in due course is an acceptable answer to when will it be ready?
Councillor Jones, would you give your reply, please?
Partly there is a little bit of a crossover of the last you addressed the question to me, because it was previously my portfolio area. It has actually now moved out of my portfolio area. But we, I think, as part of a wider look at housing strategy, it will become part of that. I can't give you an exact date, but yes, it is important. And it'll be something I will discuss with councillor Fortin McAllister, because I think it possibly falls more within me. But that's something we can discuss.
Thank you. Question 13, councillor Cat, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, I do, thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you councillor Fortin McAllister for your answer. It'd be good to chat more about enforcement in this area. I would, it would be great as well to know if you talk about that the strategy is kind of being reviewed. Can you give us some more details about what that strategy would be, what action the council will take? Will there be a programme? Will there be resources dedicated to proactively trying to enforce these rules instead of waiting for renters to come and complain? Because we often know that a lot of renters aren't aware of the rights and are often quite afraid of trying to enforce their own rights.
Thanks councillor Cat. So I agree that there needs to be action to ensure that renters are supported in making these complaints and bringing them forwards. Ultimately, we are hindered by Conservative government cuts year upon year, which is designed to ensure that councils cannot assist renters, because most of the Tory MPs are private landlords. Ultimately, what we do want to do is to ensure that in the longer term, we have a self-funding system, fining the landlords the maximum possible that we can under the law, and ensuring that we can use those fines to pay for the staff that we need. Ultimately, it's part of, there will be a long-term strategy to ensure that we are able to have a more proactive approach. However, in the short term, it's unfortunately not realistic to expect us to immediately start taking on additional staff to have an immediate proactive approach. I'd love to do so. I've spoken in this chamber multiple times about landlordism being one of the scourges of society, which especially when it comes to the residential landlords, who often do exploit the most vulnerable within society. We need to ensure that when we have a change of government, that we can fully utilise a lot of the changes that brings. And I will be the first to try my best to ensure that we do take a more proactive approach. But it does have to work within the realms of reality, unfortunately.
Thank you. Question 14, as councillor Wallis sent apologies, there will be no supplementary question. Question 15, councillor Young, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, I do. Thank you councillor Hampton for clarifying the procedure and ensuring action was taken in this particular case. I would be interested to know if data is collected on contamination, for example, the timing of contamination collections following reports, and also frequency and locations of contamination reports, so that preventative action on hotspots and frequent offences, for example, can be thought about. And if such data is available, could it be shared, please?
Thank you. Councillor Hampton, would you give your reply, please?
Thank you very much for your questions. I've been trying to write a little note of the data you requested there. I'm not sure off the top of my head exactly which of those are recorded and can be shared, but I'll go away and keep you in the loop and hopefully be able to share that with you in due course.
Thank you.
Question 16, councillor Francis, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, I do, thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you for your answer. I wondered what evidence you've got of reaching out to other councils and how you are benchmarking your performance and whether you could share that with me?
Councillor Hampton, would you give your reply, please?
Yes, I can ask officers for that trail of the conversations they've had. I can tell you as recently as this morning, we had, for example, Norwich Northwick Waste Partnership, which saw us talk to our very immediate neighbours in the region about what the different districts and county are doing and sharing that practice. But yeah, absolutely happy to provide some information to you in due course.
Councillor Galvin, do you have a supplementary question for question 17, please?
Yes, I do, Lord Mayor, thank you very much. Thank you for your answer. I'm sure you understand how important it is to ask these questions and seek transparency around the health provision in our city. On that note, I actually wanted to ask this question to councillor Stonard. The leader of the council was the financial director of One Norwich from November 2021 to November 2023, when he resigned from the board around the time this vital health service announced it was collapsing due to financial issues. It has been raised with me by concerned members of the public that this was not disclosed on his City Council register of interest for these two years, until October 2023, at the time of the collapse, which is a clear breach of the code of conduct and the law, I believe. Can you, councillor Stonard, explain why you did not disclose this interest while you were on the board of directors of One Norwich?
The supplementary question, it is for councillor Kidman.
Oh, I can rephrase it, yeah, okay. Do you think that councillor Stonard should answer questions in public on why he did not disclose his interest when he was a director of One Norwich, councillor Kidman?
Well, as my answer has outlined, Norfolk County Council is the body responsible for public health. But as part of my portfolio, I have a place on the integrated care board. I can raise these concerns with the board. Again, public health is not a city council function. This question, this answer to your question, I believe is relevant to your question. And I'm happy to come back with any responses I can for you.
Question 18, councillor Price, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, I do, Lord Mayor. In your response, you say that Norwich City Council doesn't have any duty or power to steer its residents. I have not asked us to steer Norwich residents. The question asks to signpost to residents the resources to assist them in making informed choices on who they bank with, with reference to ethical considerations and fossil fuel exposure on our website and social media. The wording of this question is lifted directly from an earlier Green motion, a motion that the Labour group voted in favour for, a motion that had been checked and cleared by Democratic Services. So what is it to be, leader? Were you wrong then to support the Green motion? Or are you wrong now when you refuse to action the motion you voted for?
Councillor Star, would you give your reply, please?
I'd be very happy to go away and look at that, councillor Price.
Question 19, councillor Oakner, will you, do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, yes, I do. I would like to thank councillor Kendrick for the clarifications he provided on council chamber capacity and decision-making around allowing members of the public to come into the chamber for our meetings. I understand that ahead of today's meeting, councillors have been asked to notify the council of any invitees they may be bringing along to today's meeting, so that seating can be reserved for them in the council chamber, seeing that capacity is limited to 80 people for fire safety reasons. Can the cabinet member please explain the rationale for giving preferential treatment to councillor invitees over other members of the public interested in witnessing this meeting? And what justifies this decision in light of our commitment to transparency and accountability?
Question 19, councillor Cavill, would you give your reply, please?
Thank you very much. Well, I think first of all, this council is very much committed to transparency. We have a situation where obviously we're being live streamed, and even when there is overcapacity, there is another room here where people can actually see that. At the end of the day, to allow councillors or democratically elected members of, elected by the people of this Norwich, it's quite normal in indeed another office to allow them, if they wish to, to bring someone along, perhaps into their local residents groups. I've done that in the past before. I don't think there's anything wrong in that. I think we are a very open council and I think we just demonstrated here today that the Lord Mayor had been sort of bringing people. But that is obviously a choice for the Lord Mayor. The Lord Mayor has obviously taken to a practice of several things, including obviously not just fire safety, but also public orders as well. I think we could all agree United States Congress on January the 6th, 2021 was a bit too open to public participation when Trump's, Trump's plan tried to storm in and overturn the elections for the US president. But I think at the end of the day, we have a quite solid system where obviously the Lord Mayor can actually bring in people if he feels that there is space available, then there often is.
Thank you. Question 20, councillor Osborne, do you have a supplementary question?
I do, I just want to say I'm slightly concerned about the equation of people attending a public meeting like this to the events of January the 6th.
That is completely unfair, I didn't say that at all. I said the Lord Mayor has a duty to maintain public order, and I think that's perfectly understandable.
If we could draw a line under that, if you could ask your supplementary question, councillor Osborne, in relation to the question you pre-submitted.
Thank you for your response, councillor Jones. You referred to the fact that we've now introduced daily checks on work orders being carried out to verify their status and take an additional action as required. Can you share any of the data that's been produced by those checks? How many work orders being completed to an adequate standard? How many are being required for additional action and what is that additional action?
Councillor Jones?
Could you, I didn't manage to write that down all at once. I don't have those figures down, but if you could email them to me, then I will get back to you.
Thank you. Question 21, councillor Calvert, do you have a supplementary question?
I do, thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you councillor Stonard for your answer. If public trust is not an issue in this council, why do so many people have to resort to Freedom of Information Act to obtain information that they're legally entitled to?
Councillor Stone, would you give your reply, please?
I think if you read my answer, you will see what the answer to that question is. And also, we are not anywhere, anyway different to many, many other councillors, councils in this area, which receive similar or greater increase in FOI requests. So I do not accept that the number of requests actually relates to or is a measure of the transparency and openness of the council.
Councillor 22, councillor, sorry, question 22, councillor Lover. Yeah, we haven't quite got to numbering, so. Councillor Lover, do you have a supplementary question?
That really would be disappointing if I was just a number. But I am disappointed in the response, because I really do feel that councillors are being excluded from important information. We do have an e-councillor page where information can be given to councillors, even if they're not invited to such events. You know, you could at least tell us about them. It came to light when a resident came to me at a surgery and wanted to talk about this big event at the football club. What was it all about? You know, I had no idea at all. So it does seem to me that there is some sort of miscommunication somewhere, whether it's done deliberately or not. But I'd like to think that in future, councillors are told about events such as a new park strategy and event taking place. And then, you know, at least we would know, even if we're not invited. And you could have also said that if there was space, that you might invite some councillors along. Knowledge is everything, really, isn't it? And if we don't have that, how can we do our job properly? So please do be better with your communication with councillors and don't exclude them.
Thank you. Councillor Stone?
So I can assure you, councillor Lover, there was no attempt to exclude you or any other councillor from an event at the football club. Absolutely no reason why we would wish to do that. And I've explained the nature of the event and what happened in my answer. I'm happy to go away and look at that again, but I can
in my answer. I'm happy to go away and look at that again. But I can promise you that when the invitation list was set up and the event was organised, it was something which was aimed at councillors, but that we were not deliberately trying to exclude.
Thank you. Question twenty three, councillor Studley, do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I do. If we're going to have shirt numbers, I'd like to be six hundred and sixty six, please. My supplementary question. Thank you, councillor Jones, for your response, which is a little woolly. When the council celebrated a hundred years of council house building in the city, it was agreed by a Labour group at Mile Cross, a flagship project, and the location of the first council home a century ago would consist of a hundred percent social housing. You've not even confirmed in this answer that it's a hundred percent affordable. So this is disappointing. It's unclear what allocation of affordable housing will be assigned to phases two and three also of this development. Please, will councillor Jones confirm that phases two and three will be one hundred percent affordable and phase one as well? If these phases will not be one hundred percent affordable housing, what will the allocations be, please?
councillor Jones.
I can confirm that phase one, the plan is for that to be affordable housing, a hundred percent affordable housing. That's the idea. Looking at in terms of social rent or affordable, that's where the viability is narrow. But actually, didn't want to commit and say it's not going to be social rent at this point, because actually, we've got several years until it's constructed. And actually, hopefully, some of the things we need in design will be in construction will be cheaper as they become more commonplace, particularly in terms of as we become more used to having things that are around consumption. That's the thing, you know, as the industry, so come on, as the industry is developing, it becomes more commonplace that actually we're building in a more energy efficient way, that hoping that some of the costs might come down. So my aim would be social rent, but a hundred percent affordable is the ultimate, you know, at worst case, but hopefully a hundred percent social. But it's a question of getting homes built, good quality homes that are affordable for residents. And that's the hundred percent commitment. But it's, it was about, actually, do we take this to planning or do we sit back and wait and see? And I would rather build now and set the rent levels once they're constructed.
Thank you. Question twenty four, councillor Davies, do you have a supplementary question, please?
No, thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Question twenty five, councillor Oliver, do you have a supplementary question, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yes, I do. So in previous years, there have been instances where we've been expecting security doors to be installed and then things have not happened for whatever reason. And I think one of the big frustrations of residents and councillors is a lack of communication. So could deputy leader commit to communicating any possible changes in plan? Obviously, we hope everything will be going just as smoothly as outlined in the response.
Thank you. councillor Jen.
Actually, I spoke to officers after I needed to try and get some clear timescales. The person I needed to speak to wasn't able, wasn't available, because I wanted to give you that today. But what I will commit to you is following up on that information, getting the current schedule, updating on that and any changes as they arise.
Thank you. Question twenty six, councillor Everett, send apologies. There will be no supplementary question. Question twenty seven, councillor Champion, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Lord Mayor. I would like to thank councillor Giles and all the officers for the work they've been doing and appreciate your response. I appreciate the audit still underway and should be finished by the end of April. And I look forward to scrutiny to hear details of what what of what work has been done, still remains and the early findings and comments. My question is, will ward councillors who have unique knowledge of their local area be asked for their insights to help shape proposals and how they can be improved and be sought during the internal consultation that is set to be the first draft and completed for the June cabinet?
councillor Giles, please.
Thank you, councillor Champion. Yes, I mean, in terms of any any specific proposals, I'm happy to commit to consultation with ward councillors. In relation to, you know, as I've said, there'll be a roadshow of events around the city, looking at, you know, with friends groups, parks, community centres, libraries and such like, to consult residents on shaping the strategy. Obviously, if scrutiny committee did want to look at it in the next civic year, then I'd be absolutely very happy to return if I'm still if I'm still in power at that point, and 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 discuss and discuss the strategy and take questions.
Thank you. A second question has been received from councillors Galvin and Osborne. But as more than thirty minutes have elapsed since the start of questions from councillors, this this will not be taken. This is in line with the constitution. So we now move on to item six, corporate plan twenty twenty four to twenty twenty nine. I call upon councillor Stonard to move item six.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I am proud to introduce our new draft corporate plan for twenty twenty four to twenty twenty nine, which has been developed for and with the people of Norwich. This has been underpinned by thorough consultation, including more than nine hundred citywide conversations. It is because of this that we have called the plan We Are Norwich. It is the word we that makes this a truly new and exciting proposition for the way we work, what we do and what we prioritise. The plan's contents are wholly developed from the priorities and challenges raised during the engagement process with our residents, councillors, our workforce, our partners, businesses, charities and voluntary creative and cultural organisations. While some of the areas of work the people of Norwich highlighted as priorities sit outside our direct control, we are committed to using our convening, influencing and advocacy powers to advance them. The approach the plan proposes in what is one of working together, identifying local needs, aspirations and ambitions, co-designing solutions with local communities and partners and focusing on outcomes rather than outputs. As such, it enables and empowers communities and council colleagues to dynamically respond to changing needs throughout the city, delivering tailored solutions with more impact and addressing issues where and when the need is greatest. It's a different way of working to previous plans, which tied us to delivering specific outputs rather than achieving wider outcomes, and which were devised by us outside of Norwich's various individual contexts, with little flexibility to adapt to the changing world around us. This will be a journey as we shift our culture and processes to align with new ways of thinking and greater participation of the communities we serve. We are at the beginning of this process with the plan before you today, a document that truly reflects the voice of the people of Norwich. As we move forward to deliver the plan, further consultation and engagement will take place, and the greater involvement of communities in the decisions and actions we take will be secured. This, we hope, will drive ever greater engagement and help us become more efficient, more effective and above all, more collaborative. As I mentioned, this is one of the largest and most comprehensive consultations we have ever undertaken. We didn't focus on numerical representation. To do so would have meant understanding the Norwich population statistically and then inviting representative samples to take part in each type of engagement. Such an approach may be appropriate to running a citizens' assembly, for example, or setting up a resident satisfaction survey in which we set a baseline for tracking changes over time. Rather, we sought a rich picture of how a broad selection of different kinds of people from different contexts feel about specific issues. In doing so, it was important that we did not require respondents to submit demographic data about themselves. Aligned with the advice of our independent and expert engagement consultants, we noted that to do so would be a barrier to participation and limit what people might tell us. So to prioritise higher response rates and more meaningful insights, the sharing of demographic information was optional for participants. Ensuring that the widest range of people within Norwich were involved in this process and that those most in need were fully represented, we undertook both online and in-person consultation methods. Along, during its committee journey, the plan and its appendices have given rise to some questions in connection to our engagement with young people. We reached out to partners and agencies working with young people during the consultation process and incorporated the views of young people from the latest city vision engagement process. Alongside working with partners to understand the concerns of underrepresented, vulnerable and disadvantaged groups, our on-street engagement took place in locations specifically chosen to give voice and agencies to those harder to reach. We recognise that engaging with children and young people is important, so we would again seek to ensure their input and views are heard as we move forward and embark on the next steps, which is our business planning process. Through through that process, we will also consider our internal infrastructure, ensuring it is fit and robust enough to deliver our ambitions. We will develop a performance framework that enables us to assess impacts and align resources and activity to meet the outcomes of the plan. The plan offers an ambitious and exciting approach to our work over the next five years. I thank all those who spared the time to shape it and in doing so helped us grow as an organisation. I heartily believe that this plan offers us a real chance to be the best we can be. Most importantly, it delivers the best for the people of Norwich, so we can be a fair and thriving city full of ambition. I recommend it to you and welcome your comments. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Stonard. I call upon councillor Jones to second the item.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm really proud to be seconding this new corporate plan. Being part of this process to create the plan has been a real pleasure, having the opportunity to engage with residents and a range of stakeholders who all want the best for our city. The theme that emerged for me in the plan reminds me of why I chose to be a councillor. I remember reflecting that as one nurse, I could only improve the health of a limited few. But as part of this council, there is an amazing opportunity for us to improve the life, life chances, health and wellbeing of thousands, which is quite a heady thought. Be it the housing we build, tackling inequalities, the parks we maintain, or the steps we take to tackle the climate emergency, to name but a few, have a lasting impact on the life chances of our residents. When we are faced with the national government, whose policies have seen life expectancy fall to the lowest in a decade, we have clearly set out our priorities that will seek to expand opportunities and benefits for our residents. As a city, it is clear we do not want to leave anyone behind. When we talk about the most basic needs and the most life-changing, I believe housing has to be pretty far at the top of every list. As a city council, we're committed to continuing to build good quality, social and affordable homes that have and have ambitions that is only limited by funding in reality. But we will continue to be creative and work with partners and explore every opportunity to add to the highest quality sustainable homes in our city. These are homes where residents do not face the heartbreaking dilemma of whether to eat or eat due to the energy efficiency measures incorporated into design. We have a track record that this corporate plan can build on at Goldsmith Street, Hansard Close, Baylord and soon Algar Street and Mile Cross. But building for the future must not be an exclusion of our existing tenants and their homes. Whilst a massive task, we're committed to the decarbonisation of our housing stock with ongoing regeneration, modernisation and improvements. This plan acknowledges that simply building homes is not enough. We will continue our partnership working to back the national trend on rough sleeping. Whilst nationally, rough sleeping has risen by over twenty percent in Norwich for the third year in a row, the count is down. This plan is clear that we must not be complacent and we will not be. We must continue the excellent partnership working such as pathways and the housing-first approach that meets the complex needs of many who find themselves sleeping on the street. It's vital we sustain these approaches, ensuring no one is left behind. Lord Mayor, there's so much more I could cover, and I'm sure my colleagues have more to add. So I'd like to finish highlighting the importance of partnerships in taking this plan forward as both the Chair of the Safe for Norwich Partnership and the Norwich Health and Wellbeing Board. I know there is so much more we can achieve working collaboratively as this new corporate plan prevails.
Thank you. I'd now like to invite Griesberg's persons. councillor Galvin, would you reply on behalf of the Green Group, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yes, today I want to emphasise the pivotal importance of the corporate plan and thank everyone involved in preparing it. It's the bedrock of our council's direction. It's required by our constitution to be prepared annually and it's described by as setting out the overall strategic direction of the council. This plan guides everything the council will do for the city, its residents and visitors for the period. I'll look at how we're doing on that in three key areas: consultation, content and context. Firstly, consultation. The Green Group has long voiced strong concerns about the almost complete lack of public and councillor involvement in this important documents formulation in the past. So this year's new approach is a step in the right direction and we're very pleased with it. But it still falls short of the comprehensive engagement we advocate. It's regrettable that the consultation lacked proper tracking, leaving us all in the dark about whose voices were truly heard. So we can't monitor that going forward. And we haven't oversampled for areas we really want to see change in etc. So we really need to address that. Notably also, there was sketchy involvement of leading charities and partners, which you've mentioned how important they are, but it left many of them unimpressed. And the admission of young people from the process was, as you said, really, really concerning and disheartening. Coming on to content, last November, Green councillors for the first time ever were consulted and we submitted key priorities, backed up by a wide range of actions to the corporate plan process. And the the priorities for us, we wanted to reflect making real changes. So they were actually do the basics well, because we don't see that's been done at the moment, operate inclusively and openly, address entrenched inequalities and lead in building a net zero resilient city. I want to briefly speak about those priorities, many of which are now in the plan for the first time, and we are really glad to see that. Excelling in the basics means meeting public expectations, including through efficient service delivery, clear performance indicators, meticulous attention to public spaces. Operating inclusively involves, among other things, the logistical consultations with no predetermined outcomes, making City Hall more accessible and actively engaging with the community. Norwich remains a divided city and our council must tackle health and social inequalities, improve wellbeing and build housing which is warm with low bills. Our vision is a city where streets are safe for all, workers are paid a living wage and nature thrives. Our corporate plan should enable us to be a leader in addressing the pressing climate and nature emergencies, working at pace and scale towards a net zero resilient city. While the new plan incorporates many of the points we raised as principles, some crucial aspects like face-to-face access, explicit measures against antisocial behaviour, on participatory democracy are missing, as well as real budgets set against huge priorities such as retrofitting council housing stock. We question this absence of specifics. For example, no timeframes and reasons for reviewing the housing delivery company's purpose when it's clear this is a key opportunity for the council. This brings me on to the delivery context and the last serious area of concern. Why has the council not conducted a comprehensive analysis of the previous corporate plan's success? A new strategic approach should always build on the previous strategic approach, assess what's been achieved, against clear indicators highlight where progress has been made in relation to previous priorities, where progress was lacking and how a new plan will accelerate progress. A new strategic approach should set out how it's different from a previous approach and why. This should be the foundation on which a new corporate plan should be justified to tell a clear narrative over time how evaluation and engagement has progressed priorities, rather than simply reset them. We don't see any of this in this corporate plan. The budget and corporate plan are usually presented simultaneously. This is because the constitution states the draft corporate plan is drawn up in parallel to the development of the budget for the period to ensure the necessary resources are in place for its delivery. Cabinet will then present the draft corporate plan to full council for approval, along with the draft budget for the coming year. So the new plan, arriving two days post-budget approval, raises eyebrows, especially as we're told the budget will deliver the corporate plan priorities. Unless magic is part of the new leader's skills, I can't see how this is logical. It's embarrassing that the administration was not able to finalise the corporate plan in time for the budget, instead produced it days after the budget. It's another strong indicator for a Labour council which is actually in disarray and chaos. A theme is emerging. How can residents trust you to run their city? How can residents trust you to run their city if you can't align diaries and produce essential documents for running the city in time?
I know the call upon councillor Stute, you can speak on behalf of the independent group, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. There's nothing in this corporate plan that I cannot support. It appears to reflect many of the aims and aspirations of people that my independent colleagues and I talk with every day. There is much to admire about the ambition for the future, the warm words about the city, its culture and heritage, and visions for economic prosperity. There is quite a bit of puff and some key words from officer school, which always makes me smile, but I thank officers for their time and dedication in producing a fine document for a fine city. I sincerely hope all these dreams come true. They are, however, just dreams, and I cannot help but notice the disconnect between the words we read and the actions we see from the current and past leadership of the council. There are sadly so many contradictions, too many to list in full, but to with a straight line of point, a few stand out, following my own experiences. It says, 'we will act to ensure homes are good quality', yet the administration vehemently supported the English Square scheme that would fail to do so on any measure, including the government's own safety standards. 'They should also be warm and in good repair', it says. Success looks like our tenants benefit from high-quality repairs and maintenance services. That was in the last corporate plan and the one before that, and it actually should be a minimum statutory obligation. And yet we know that much of our housing stock is cold and damp. Successive leaders have known about this throughout, but some tenants wait years for urgent repair of serious issues. Our officers clearly have a handle on this, and we know they desperately want to make a difference, fix the mess, but there was no steer from the administration to make it happen. What kind of leader and member for housing leaves babies and children exposed to damp and mould for seven years? I'm not just pointing the finger at councillors Stonehart and Jones, because they're fairly recent in their roles, their predecessors are equally culpable. Elsewhere, under the open and modern heading, the plan states, 'we will need to create the right structures, invest in our people, provide fulfilling careers and equip them with the skills, tools and workspace they need to provide truly 21st century services for Norwich'. And yet many of our best people are leaving to fulfil careers elsewhere. The tools, such as the licensing process, are stuck in the 1990s. System upgrades are promised and never delivered. Our officers need the resources to modernise. Meanwhile, when the best opportunity for a generation to embrace the absolute certainty of exponential growth in the green economy, and retrofitting in particular, the administration terms all risk adverse and refuses to engage with officers that have the skills and ambition to make it happen. Our very own line of homes could be several years into jobs creation, training programmes for our young people, and bidding for contracts that could be worth hundreds of millions over the coming decades. I've championed this prospect at every opportunity, but years behind the rest now, we almost certainly miss out. So I look forward to 2029 and wonder what will happen, how much of what success could look like we'll actually see. The recent history for some of the most important measurements, success do not bode well, but I'm using much more positive in my outlook than this, so I'll finish that way. Given a steer in the right direction, with a new committee system in place that will replace the lead-on cabinet model, we can deploy a bold new ambition for the city and actually make those dreams a reality. On that basis, I will vote for this corporate plan and encourage my group and all members to do the same. Thank you.
Councillor Ackroyd, will you respond on behalf of the Lib Dem group, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm going to be quite brief, as the person speaking, and possibly a bit kinder in what I'm going to say. I would like to begin by thanking officers and all those involved for all the hard work that's gone into developing the corporate plan thus far, and also for their time in presenting it to us at scrutiny. This is a huge piece of work with a commitment to working together to improve the lives of the residents of Norwich. And important to note, and I take a lot from this, that it is not finite, but an ongoing process with partners and residents, a living document that will evolve into what we all want to see. And I think that's a very important thing that I'm reading into it. It was hugely important that this year various forms of engagement were used, online and in person. Hugely important, too, that in the interest of equality and inclusion, there is commitment to continuing to provide provision for those who do not have digital knowledge or access. This can be a financial issue, or as is often the case in my ward, simply an aging population, many of whom didn't need digital skills pre-retirement and haven't acquired them since. I hope there will be commitment to face-to-face engagement for people where it's necessary. I hope that will be part of the ongoing work. It was good to note, I felt, that although engagement was structured with predetermined questions, ideas and feedback were welcome, and ideas were not lost because they didn't fit the structure. And again, that's what I'm reading, and I hope that I'm reading that correctly. I felt there was a feeling of honesty from respondents on questions such as housing, with its mention of maintenance and other issues. Some of the issues raised, such as transport, are not in the remit of city council. It was also interesting to note that people are asking for more collaboration across city and county, an issue that regularly comes up in discussion with residents. So we are very happy to support the corporate plan and look forward to seeing how it evolves in the coming months.
Thank you. Any other members wish to indicate to speak? So let's take a note of hands. I normally try and take them in the order that I see them go up, but they all went up simultaneously, so I'll take one on that side. Fine, thank you. Hopefully I've got everyone's up. Start with councillor McGuire, please, your three minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I want to start by saying what a wonderful idea it was to make clear the difference between the budgets and the corporate plan. They're both sides of a single coin, their faces are very different. And having them discussed and examined separately at a separate meeting is a brilliant idea. We need to see and understand them as separate documents that help us to plan and work towards the bright future that our city deserves. I think the fact that the corporate plan came within moments, days of the budget, reveals something of a long-term trope in politics. At first I had Tom King, Secretary of State for Defence, saying years ago, 'this is policy-led but resource-disciplined'. It was important for the budget to be in place, that the corporate plan, which had been developed parallel with, was then able to emerge in the way that it is. Now, I could take any aspect of Norwich Labour's bold corporate plan and talk about its merits, but perhaps I might appear biased. Our residents have applauded in spades already. The plan is a masterpiece of a document in the way it weaves our major themes throughout, and whichever part you read, you will see that people, our residents, those in our business and manufacturing communities, those in retail and the service industries, and our visitors, are all at the heart of this plan. The corporate plan has clearly been tested every turn by the question, 'what does this do for people?'. All that we wish in the corporate plan, the environment, the ecology, the social fabric, the economy, they all support each other in a positive feedback that helps to make each aspect more achievable. I'll focus on the environment a little to illustrate this. Our accolade-winning biodiversity policy, creating greener, more diverse environments, not only supports good physical and mental health, it attracts business and investment. Come to Norwich, where you can breathe more easily. Come to Norwich, where you can study at two highly rated universities and one FE institution, the City College. Come there and study in a green and welcoming city. Our housing stock, which you cherish and add to, sadly not as quickly as people want to exercise their right to buy. Their higher-than-average energy rating of our stock helps keep carbon emissions down and promotes a better environment, but equally is a vital weapon for fighting fuel poverty. The large glen area so much around our housing stock is the envy of cities across the UK. And further afield, I record a visit of Spanish social workers and educators who came many years ago to see how Norwich worked with deprived groups. They were taken to one of our estates, a trance which won, and they thought we'd take them to a well-to-do area. That is what our corporate plan achieves.
Councillor McGuire, could you draw your remarks to close?
Lord Mayor, receiving this corporate plan is a great move for our city. I hope everyone supports it. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Next we have councillor Fulton-McAllister.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. So I just wanted to draw our attention to some of the key areas within the corporate plan relating to my portfolio of regulatory services. Linking back to an answer I gave earlier to councillor Cat, I'm particularly pleased to see that within the corporate plan, we do have a commitment to ensuring the highest possible quality private sector rented accommodation. Unfortunately, within our current system, it is a reality that landlords exist. It means that we therefore do have to ensure that private landlords are up for quality of their own stock. We can obviously undertake the enforcement needed at the most serious levels, but we need further powers from the government to ensure that we can undertake further actions to ensure that landlords are increasing the quality of their own housing stock. Within our own housing stock, as a large social landlord, we are obviously building all of our future council housing to the highest quality that we can economically afford to do so. We are also using our planning powers to ensure that where it is within the law, we can ensure that future developments are as low carbon as possible. Ultimately, I'd rather not be putting in caveats about where it's legally possible, which is again why we need that change of government. And this corporate plan, combined with a potential change of government, could give us serious additional powers to ensure that we actually deliver on a lot of the positive vision that we see. Finally, I am particularly pleased that this is the first corporate plan that has come across my desk in my time, both as a councillor and an organiser, which makes reference to the important partnership that we have with the trade union movement in this city. It's a particularly important area for us to focus upon and to ensure that we deliver high-quality, unionised jobs within Norwich.
Thank you. Councillor Giles, next, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Our corporate plan sets out an ambitious vision for Norwich, building on the work undertaken and in progress under this Labour-led council, with a sustainable and inclusive economy, a fairer society and a greener environment. This is a vision shaped by listening carefully to the voices of communities across Norwich, a vision responsive to their needs and wishes. Residents love Norwich. It is a fine city with dynamic communities and beautiful parks and green spaces. However, it sadly remains a city with significant socio-economic challenges. In some communities, there are structural inequalities, with some families stuck in a generational cycle of poor educational attainment, low wages, poverty and poorer health and wellbeing outcomes. Our ambitious corporate plan sets out how we will continue seeking to combat these challenges. We will seek to build a more inclusive economy by raising incomes. We will continue to work in partnership to build on our successful first year as a real living wage place, to make payment of the real living wage across the city the norm. We will seek to build on this work over the next year by producing a fine city employers' charter, working with the Labour movement to raise trade union membership and collective bargaining coverage. We will work to maximise the quantity of residents receiving the social security benefits they are entitled to, continuing to offer a 100% council tax reduction scheme to our most deprived residents, and grant funding our financial inclusion consortium. This council stands ready and willing to work with the Labour government to support pathways and overcome barriers our residents are facing in decently paid and secure work. Our corporate plan sets out how we will continue to support residents to access affordable sport and physical activity, both active and passive. We will seek to grow the number of residents using our Go For Less scheme to provide discounted access to our leisure centres and our allotments. We will continue to invest in conserving and enhancing our parks and open spaces, upgrading both playing pitches and play areas, and continuing to maintain our tennis courts to a high standard. Our corporate plan highlights the value this council places on nature and biodiversity, utilising the opportunities presented to us through biodiversity baseline study evidence base. We will continue using multiple income streams to prioritise protection and enhancement of biodiversity in our key biodiversity character area habitats.
Councillor Giles, could you draw your remarks to close, please?
A Labour-led council delivering for residents on a more prosperous city, a fairer society and a greener local environment. A corporate plan for Norwich shaped by the needs and wishes of residents. I hope we can all get behind and support tonight. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Cat, would you like to speak, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Again, as I've said before, it probably doesn't surprise people, I want to talk about housing. One of the councillors, Julia, has touched on some of these points already, and I think they're really, really important and ones that we should really remember. We have decent homes for all as an objective within this plan, but I think we urgently need to see plans of how this objective is going to be achieved. From my perspective, as a ward councillor, who regularly sees some of the conditions that our residents and tenants live in, it's not a record that currently we should be proud of as a council. We've seen comments from the housing ombudsman in various cases, we've seen them say that we have one of the worst maladministration rates in the country. We continue to see NCSL fail to deliver the basics of repairs, mould and damp issues across the city getting worse and worse and worse. And we currently haven't seen a plan for this to change, and I think that's what we really, really need, just to start delivering for the basics. Overall, we will vote for this plan today because we can get behind the priorities broadly, and because for the first time, there was actually some consultation. But as you have heard, we do have doubts about delivery in the current chaos that we do find ourselves here. We need robust evidence and delivery processes. Today, we really challenge the leader in the administration to prove their commitment to change with action. Norwich needs delivery, not disarray.
Next up, councillor Kidman, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. How often do you get asked your views on living in the place you call home like this? Not often. I want to emphasise the importance of listening, really listening, to the needs and challenges and aspirations of the residents of our city. It's especially easy to overlook those with the quieter voices, and it's our responsibility to understand and address the hopes, concerns and ambitions of all our residents. What do people enjoy about living here in Norwich, the place we call home, and what prevents people from thriving and flourishing? The council comprises people who are also Norwich people. We here inside the council chamber, we live here too. We're working here, socialising here, raising families here, and love the city we live in and worry about the future. We all appreciate the need and the right to a good quality of life and living without fears about our future. Remember, we have a plan, we're working within the framework of our current corporate plan, but this new plan embraces open conversations to help inform the work we do. Norwich is a great place to live and work, and people have returned Norwich is a great place to live and work, and people have returned to Norwich to raise their families. There's always scope for improving, and we owe a welcoming, thriving, inclusive city to those people who've returned home to bring their children up here, and no wonder they have, with our award-winning green parks and open green spaces, heritage and arts and culture. I'm passionate about breaking down barriers, always. How, for instance, can we make the city centre, which Norwich people value, more accessible? And how can we ensure everyone in Norwich has a good job and businesses have the ability to keep good workers here? And how do we overcome other barriers to work, like social and health factors? This plan enables the council to be more agile and flexible in its approach to managing changing circumstances, while retaining its sharp focus on its ambitions to achieve all-round better outcomes for Norwich and its people and businesses and organisations, big and small. This consultation has created multiple platforms for dialogue, and this cannot be emphasised enough, this is for the first time. This platform, or platforms, for listening to the diverse voices within our city fosters a sense of belonging and inclusivity. It acknowledges the richness of our communities with all our cultures, backgrounds and perspectives. This is a plan by the people of Norwich, as much as it is for the people of Norwich.
Thank you. Councillor Packer, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Norwich City Council's vision, as set out in this corporate plan, is to become a fair and thriving city full of ambition. Delivering on key priorities, being an open and modern council, and doing the basics well in an efficient, timely and well-informed way is key towards achievability. Regarding my portfolio, this corporate plan commits to working in a way to achieve the following outcomes: ensuring all of our services are accessible and value for money; delivering easier access to services and providing consistently good customer service; co-designing services, making them responsive to the needs of the communities we serve; providing easy-to-access digital services; reducing our carbon footprint by increasing digital take-up; using data and the experience of our residents to better understand what the people of Norwich need to thrive. By taking this approach of making our services straightforward, intuitive and available 24/7 in the way that we now expect from other organisations, will mean our residents can access services in a more efficient, effective and bespoke way which benefits the environment. With regards to comments on face-to-face services, for those face-to-face services under my portfolio for customers, they will continue to be provided. Councillors who attended Cabinet in March will be aware of the new customer digital strategy which was presented. This detailed how our digital services would work alongside our face-to-face services, not instead of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Mike Sands, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I note the five emerging priorities at the bottom of page 21 of the council papers. Just above these are the five corporate priorities upon which they build. I note in particular the third of these emerging priorities, a climate-responsive Norwich. It's good that the Green Party supports this third emerging priority through their motion this evening, Nature Networks. It echoes this emerging priority, a climate-responsive Norwich. As example, there's nothing to stop the Green members or any member in across the council to suggest content for the citizen magazine, such as homemade swift and back boxes and the best place to mount these on their homes. But further, I note in their motion, the call for interconnected nature corridors. There is certainly provision for this in this emerging priority, to provide much-needed plant and animal biodiversity. First, with the mousehole heath, of which I'm a chair of the Conservatives. This extends from the fringes of the city right down almost to the city centre, providing all sorts of habitat and biodiversity. Second, the wide expanse of the heath and marshland west of the city along the Wentson Valley. And thirdly, the new three-score development, as well as providing good quality and enhanced much-needed housing, incorporates well-planned wildlife corridors from the heights of Cloverhill down toward and including the Bowthor Marshes. This is all reflected in the intent of a climate-responsive Norwich, so of course I will be fully endorsing this corporate plan. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Sands. Do any other members wish to indicate a speech? Councillor Kendrick, please.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Well, it's difficult to, in just three minutes, talk about such a detailed, worthy and very beneficial book as publications such as this, but as I only have three minutes, I'd better get on with it then. I think some things I would highlight is that how we're going to secure increased funding to support our city aims, improve the way that we manage our assets for the benefit of the city centre and local neighbourhoods in a way that very few local authorities actually can. I actually just returned from an association of local government meeting over the last two days. I should say, noted when to this local authority, and heard applied to so many local authorities in a much worse situation than ourselves. But also the document talks about how we can maximise the opportunities from our de-evolution deals and other investment opportunities to improve the city and the local neighbourhoods, providing, procuring locally where viable from low-carbon suppliers, managing our spending responsibly, and I think that we have certainly most definitely done. Seeking best value options, taking safe proportionate measures in terms of risk of performance, project and contract management, ensuring effective transparency in decision-making, scrutiny and governance. And I think that's again a very important thing, because one of the factors that has been involved by some of these other local authorities, unfortunately have had to issue sexual unfilled notices, is they haven't been as transparent as perhaps they should have been. We've been making sure we have an inclusive, high-performance and high-motivated workforce that is diverse and represents the city that we serve. And I must at this point pay tribute to our officers and our staff, who I do think are of the first-class quality and of the keystone behind this council and the excellent performance that it has achieved. In the last few seconds, I have to add, I just wish to make one point, and I think it was rather regrettable, and the name of the councillor, Harris, who was the former housing member, who was my friend in Ward Council, somewhat misplaced, she spent many years working as hard as she could in terms of housing, and she certainly wasn't there to put babies and children in dad consular, and any more than the cussing that she was.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Kendrick. Councillor Hatt.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. A lot's happened in the couple of years since the previous corporate plan was adopted. We've come out of the COVID-19 pandemic, into the worst cost of living crisis in a generation. It's been a change in political and corporate leadership, and hopefully we're on the verge of a change of government as well. So, going back to residents, businesses, partners with their views, in one of the most extensive consultation processes this council has seen, and using that to refresh our priorities and vision for the city to meet these times has been a worthwhile exercise. Speaking as the cabinet member for climate change, I'm especially pleased that this is a corporate plan which puts climate action even further at the heart of the agenda. It reaffirms our commitment to reaching net zero as a council by 2030 and as a city, working with partners by 2045. It also brings to the forefront the need to adapt to future impacts of climate change, as well as those which are already unavoidable, and to build a climate resilient future for Norwich. Reaching these goals will require practical action to improve public transport, insulate homes, protect and enhance biodiversity, our parks and green spaces, and strive for a clean, low-waist city, which are all things that residents made clear in the course of the consultation that they want to see as priorities. And as ever, being able to demonstrate that the journey to net zero brings benefits and opportunities for residents is hugely important to achieve our public buy-in that we need to pursue our climate goals at pace. It was also clear, especially from consultation and engagement sessions with businesses and organisations, that doing what we can to develop the local green economy and bring skilled low-carbon jobs to the city also has to be a priority which this plan reflects. This plan sets out our overarching vision, but work continues to build the strategies and action plans which will help us to deliver towards it. For example, and as I've already touched on tonight, our forthcoming citywide action plan will provide the next layer of detail about how we will use our position to lead, coordinate and enable citywide net zero. Importantly, the budget we passed last month serves to put these priorities into action and has accordingly increased the resource available to environmental strategy and housing to deliver against our climate priorities. This will help enhance the capacity available to drive forward the retrofit of our estate and housing stock, including developing investment and funding cases to finance this shift, and it will allow us to continue with the citywide net zero work I've talked about already. So, thank you very much to everyone who's worked hard to put together this plan and ensure we were able to consult as widely as we were able to on it. I look forward to voting in favour of it tonight.
Thank you. Do any other members wish to indicate? No, in which case I'd like to invite councillor Stunard to reply, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The first thing I'd like to do is to thank all the officers who've been involved in the production of the plan. They've done an excellent job, worked really hard and produced an excellent document for us. I also want to pick up just a couple of things that were said. A couple of the criticisms came from the other side of the chamber. We have a clear plan in place to address damp and mould, let's be clear about that. We've got a lot of hard work to do, but we have a clear plan to address it. On retrofitting, as you will know, we're waiting on the HRA condition survey before we can proceed, so you know what the process is for that. The corporate plan was developed in conjunction with the budget, they are aligned, and I think it's curious, because you keep talking about chaos, but you can't really come up with a single credible example of it. You sort of talk about the corporate plan and the budget not being aligned, when they are? So, I don't know what else you've got. And remember, we've got sound finances, which you would blow if you had the chance. We've seen all your plans for expenditure, we know what they are, you've talked about them in this chamber, we are proud to have outside sound finances. And I'll tell you what would be chaotic. Chaos would be a green administration. You take contradictory positions on the same issue. You can't agree a single common line or position on a single issue. You vote all in different directions. It's all rhetoric and not substance. It would be absolute chaos. How would you run an administration? Our ambition is to be a fair and thriving city. Can't hear you, sorry. Our ambition is to be a fair and thriving city, and we've got a plan that will deliver that. We've heard about regulatory services and the commitment to the highest possible quality private sector accommodation. We've heard about building future social housing to the highest possible quality as we already do. We've heard about raising incomes to create a more inclusive city, a real living wage city. We've heard about the Fine Cities Employment Charter. We've heard about investing in and conserving and enhancing our award-winning parks and open spaces. We've talked about, we've heard about the emphasis on nature and biodiversity. We've heard about accessible and value-for-money services. We've heard about a climate-responsive Norwich with a climate resilient future. There's nothing chaotic about that. All of that is based on a comprehensive consultation that's taken place across the whole of the city, to produce a plan by the people of Norwich, for the people of Norwich. And I love it, you can shake your head as much as you like, I am proud of this plan, we are all proud of this plan, and we will implement it. I commend it to you.
Right, we'll now put the item to the vote. All those in favour, please indicate.
Decide, you can't decide, it's chaos.
Could I have quiet, please, while the vote is taking place? No officers to count. Okay, thank you. All those against, please? Thank you, that is carried. As we've now reached the two-hour mark of the meeting, I need to ask if any of the remaining items can be taken as unopposed business. Does any member wish to oppose any of the remaining items? Please indicate, and then I'll go to councillor Jones.
For reasons that will come to light when I talk about it, but I wish to oppose my own motion, which is 12E, 12B.
So, it's 12B opposed? Any others, please? Councillor Stunard?
Yeah, just like to be clear, so in terms of substantive items, so item... The adoption of the Great Norwich Local Plan, Paid Policy Statement, Treasury Management Call to Three, Proven for the Three Carbon Reduction Projects, and the adjustment of the 2425 Budget and Capital Programme. So, could you draw?
Item 11 has been withdrawn.
So, could you just clarify the position of those, not the motions, but the reports?
Reports, if they're taken as unopposed, they're taken as unopposed, so they then go through.
Just to be clear, so they're taken as unopposed, and we're all happy with that? Yes? Okay.
Any other opposition then to...
All the others. I'd like to, apart from 12E, Norwich Nature Networks, I'd like to object to all the other motions, please.
Thank you, sir. All the motions apart from 12E. I would, councillor Sands, do you wish to oppose anything that hasn't already been noted?
Did the leader say he was going to oppose all of the other motions? So, that includes what I was going to mention, which is 12C.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any opposition to motions or other report items over here? Thank you very much. Well, in which case, we'll have a 10-minute break, and so we'll come back at 9:45 and begin discussion of motion 12A. All other items are now unopposed and carried. Thank you. Thank you.
Now is the time. It's back to the drawing board for Anglia Square, and it should be for the SIL exemption policy. It was, after all, only rushed through to benefit Anglia Square just two weeks before the first application came to the planning committee. If... Thank you, Lord Mayor. I would like to request a recorded vote on this item.
Thank you, councillor Davis. Councillor Stute, may I call upon you to second the motion, please?
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. I formally second. I'd like to read a letter out that some of my former colleagues and I wrote to the Labour NEC back in 2018. As we write, sorry, we write as sitting councillors in Norwich to bring your attention to a difficult matter and to ask for your intervention. You may be aware that Norwich City Council's Labour Group has been divided by a policy to introduce an exemption to the community infrastructure levy. This decision has been pursued by the leader of the group, where it was originally inserted into a Cabinet member's portfolio report without their knowledge. I have that report. The Labour Group then stated that Cabinet must delay the decision to allow consultation with the Labour Group leader, sorry, to allow consultation which the Labour Group leader tried to override. Eventually, after threat of cabinet rebellion by some Cabinet members, this was then adhered to. The Labour Group then chose to back the policy after intensive lobbying, but there is still a number of councillors who are deeply opposed, where requests for a free vote have been denied and there have been suggestions the whip will be withdrawn should they vote against. We feel that the problem, as well as the original manner of the policy being brought forward, is politically disastrous. Already, we have negative publicity from the Tories and will expect it to be utilised by the Lib Dems and Greens in the run-up to the all-out elections. This was in 2018. Moreover, we feel that the SIL exemption policy goes against the core values of the Labour Party. That's right, at a time when the government is being starved of resources and will be the question on everyone's lips. The opposition will capitalise on this crisis in the Labour Group. There will be a vote to introduce the SIL exemption in full council on Tuesday 27th of November 2018. Labour councillors in opposition to the policy are situated in the most marginal seats in the city, which were won from the Green Party when Jeremy Corbyn became leader. These are the seats which will suffer both...
Councillor Stute, your three minutes are up now.
Okay, there's, it goes on and there is a, there's a stamp on it and it's Matthew Fulton-McAlister who wrote this letter and a number of it signed, including other Cabinet members. So I just wanted to bring that and second the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll call upon councillor Stoneard to respond on behalf of the Labour Group, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This motion is well past its sell-by date. The original intent of its proposers, which, let's be very clear, was their obsession with seeking to discover the former Anglia Square scheme is now sadly history. However, it appears that the obsession continues. The motion references the aborted Anglia Square development proposals and a lot has been said about that. So let's be clear what this administration was seeking to achieve: 2,200 direct construction jobs, 288 jobs in retail and commercial premises, 1,100 badly needed new homes, and additional spending in the local economy by a residence of £36 million. And that's what the opposition councillors sought simply to toss away by opposing the planning consent and then when that failed, attempting to remove the SIL exemption retrospectively. All of those jobs, all those homes, all that regeneration, thrown away by people, many of whom claim to be socialists. It sickens not just me, but any rational-thinking person who puts the needs of the community and city first before narrow petty party politicking. The SIL exemption policy is intended to be used in extremely rare circumstances, hence the name. The purpose is to facilitate sites which are extremely difficult to get to viability. The opposition and not just the independent group have been circulating misleading and downright disingenuous information about the policy. They said the SIL exemption money could otherwise be spent on essential facilities for the area around Anglia Square, when the fact is, as we know, the money is pulled by several local authorities and could not be earmarked for any particular local area. They fail to be honest about the fact that the first two phases of the development were being built at a loss, so there was no profit to pay into the pool. They even argued that the developers should cross-subsidise the SIL payments from other profitable schemes effectively operating as a charity. Really? On what planet does that happen? That claim is either hopelessly naive or just downright disingenuous. You choose which. We warned that without the SIL exemption, the developer might walk away and the opposition denied it. Then the developer did actually walk away. Now the Greens and independents are busily rewriting history and trying to claim they said the opposite to conceal their blushes. Here's what councillor Osborne says now: "I and my colleagues also had questions about whether Western Homes would stick with the project in economically uncertain times." But here's what he was saying in this chamber last autumn: "The applicants may say that if they don't get the SIL exemption, they will walk away. They're tied into this development now. They've already spent millions of pounds on it. We know that they don't want to walk away and lose that money." Oh dear. Meanwhile, back in the real world, these are very difficult times for the construction industry. Going forward, we need to have the possibility of SIL exemption in our toolkit to facilitate other schemes which are struggling to achieve viability. Difficult choices may have to be made. Do we forego some SIL but get jobs and homes? Or do we stick inflexibly to an ideological principle and forego all those homes and jobs? And by the way, don't forget that if there's no development, then there's no SIL anyway. What an embarrassing own goal you now own. It also must be made clear that these difficult financial circumstances in the construction industry, it is quite possible that our wholly owned line homes will need to apply for SIL exemption on schemes which include social and affordable housing. Voting for this motion could result in other housing schemes not being able to proceed and a loss of social and affordable housing. Is that what you really want? Lord Mayor, let me tell everyone in this chamber a simple reality. For every house we build in this city, we take a piece of council tax which pays for public services. For every business we help create, we provide jobs, but also business rates which helps us pay for public services. It's easy to pass a motion which damages this potential, but I know that my constituents expect their council to seize opportunities, however imperfect they sometimes are, and forge them into a better outcome. Those in elected office need to act like grown-ups, be the adults in the room and sometimes tell the hard truths and face down lies and distortions. And it is on this basis that I urge members to vote against this motion. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Stoneard. Before I call councillor Osborne, can I ask councillor Stute to turn this microphone off? I believe I've got a... Is it a point of order, councillor Davis?
Point of clarification, thank you, Lord Mayor. Clearly, either the Labour leader hasn't read or understood the motion, because it says the council resolves to ask Cabinet to: continue to allow SIL ECR for charitable and/or social housing relief claims, inform charities and social housing providers of ECR and how to apply, and continue to allow ECR for self-builds and residential annexes. Nowhere does it say SIL exemption will be scrapped for social housing relief claims. In fact, it says the opposite.
Thank you for that clarification. Councillor Osborne, you have five minutes to respond on behalf of the Green Group, please.
Thank you. I probably won't take all of the five minutes, given the time that we've been here. I think, I just want to unpick a few of the confusions in councillor Stoneard's argument there. So he's saying, oh, look at the independent group, they're just so obsessed with Anglia Square, and yet your entire speech has been about Anglia Square, when this motion is about SIL ECR policy that the council adopted in 2018. That policy was adopted in 2018, as councillor Davis pointed out, just a couple of weeks before the planning application was submitted for Anglia Square. I asked a question last year at council, to which you responded, councillor Stoneard, that that policy was not adapted with the interests of Anglia Square in mind. And yet you just outlined a speech in which you very much make it clear that the SIL policy that was adopted by the council was designed to support the development of Anglia Square.
Can we have councillor Osborne continuing, please?
I think, you know, this is a point of debating a policy, it's not debating the merits of a particular development. The SIL ECR policy, as councillor Davis has outlined, is essentially awarding tax breaks to very, very wealthy people. That's not a policy that I believe that any group in this council should be supporting during a cost-of-living crisis. It would certainly not be a good look for Norwich City Council. And you can see that from the number of people who, within the space of a week or so, signed petitions against the SIL ECR for Anglia Square in that particular instance. What I would, the other thing that I would add to what councillor Davis and councillor Stute have already outlined and the concerns raised by councillor Stute's Labour colleagues in 2018, is that this, the SIL ECR policy as it is adopted at the moment actually is to a lack of transparency. So there's a lot of questions when the Anglia Square application came in late last year as to who made the decision and what processes went into that decision. And councillor Stoneard, in the debates around that, you repeatedly referred to having had information from the developers that opposition councillors were not privy to. Please, could you disclose the information that we were not privy to that was, that led you to make the decision to exempt Anglia Square from ECR?
Can we allow just councillor Osborne to carry on?
I'm quoting back your words at you. I'll leave it at that, so please disclose that information.
Thank you. Councillor Lovett, on behalf of the Liberal Democrat Group, please.
Yes. Thank you, Lord Mayor. This evening, we have adopted the new Greater Norwich Local Plan, although disappointingly, we didn't have a chance to debate it. That plan was made under the new duty to cooperate legislation and ordering councils to cooperate with their neighbouring authorities where it was necessary to do so, in order to take account of the need to provide for those who live outside of the city's boundaries and who depend upon Norwich for their work, education, entertainment and leisure. Norwich as a city has a unique role to play in housing all these facilities, as it has done over the centuries. In providing that role, it's acknowledged that it has unique circumstances when it comes to development in the city, often brownfield sites which may need archaeological exploration, site remediation or other work incurring extra costs before any development takes place. This is also reflected in the costs of development being higher in a city centre than in the outer suburbs and is further reflected in the plan, in the difference in the affordable housing requirement set in the city centre at 28% as opposed to 33% in Greater Norwich. It seems to me logical to follow this difference in the cost of development by Norwich having the SIL exemption policy, which allows exemption from SIL where it's deemed necessary for the development to go ahead. And we're talking a lot about Anglia Square because that was a point in question. If you impose the SIL, it wouldn't be viable. And that's what, you know, one of the reasons why it all fell apart, apart from lots of other reasons, but that was certainly one of them. So I feel very strongly, and the Liberal Democrats do, that in keeping SIL exemption, we retain the flexibility in using it in exceptional circumstances. So let's keep it. We don't always have to use it, but if it's felt that it is necessary to allow, to be pragmatic and allow a development to go ahead, as we've heard, to allow the new houses to be built, to allow jobs to be created, it would be stupid if you threw it out just for the sake of the exemption. It's an open book, I understand, sort of exercise that takes place so that you can examine the costs of the development to see whether it does need the exemption or not. And, you know, I mean, obviously, developers get specialists in to fight their cause, but we also can get advice on how you look at these things. But I do think it's important that we retain it to keep that flexibility and be able to use it if we want to. If we haven't got that flexibility and don't have it, then, you know, often we will lose development as a result. So I think I'd rather keep it, keep the flexibility and use it when we really have to.
Thank you. Any other members' clarification?
Councillor Lovett said that imposing the SIL was one reason that the Anglia Square project fell through. Of course, that wasn't the case because Cabinet voted not to impose the SIL. There were other factors that led to the collapse of the Anglia Square motion, proposal. So with or without the SIL, it would have collapsed.
Yeah, sorry, there were other things. But certainly, if it had included the SIL, that's what I meant to say, it would have collapsed. It was, yeah.
Sorry. Thank you. I think we have to, we have to accept that perhaps at this hour, councillor Schmira and then councillor Mike Sands, I think we have to accept that perhaps at this hour, members are not fully on top of every single word or syllable of the debate utter and we have to take on board the general gist. So councillor Schmira, please.
Yeah, I've got a couple of points to make, thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm one of, I think, only two Green Party councillors who are here in this debate in 2018. It's a sign of how the Greens have, as Ian Stute mentioned, grown partly as a result of issues such as this, issues where what you normally expect, I suppose, from a Labour administration has not come to pass. And SIL exemption was sold, I remember, from this SIL, this community infrastructure levy. That would be an example of that exceptional circumstance that councillor Lovett talks about. However, what we really knew, given the timing of it, that this was basically a favour to the developers of Anglia Square, developers who make millions and millions of pounds in profit and yet contributed far too little when it came in terms of affordable housing and yet would still be given basically what is amounts to a tax break. So I think it's absolutely right that we rescind this policy because it is there to serve big developers, not the kind of community infrastructure like a swimming pool, for example, that it was sold to us in 2018. And the other point I would like to make, if I may, is the implications that this has on contiguous councils, notably South Norfolk and Broadland, with whom, as councillor Stoneard mentioned, we pooled that resource. Now, let's understand it. That had the potential to jeopardise that kind of relationship. If we were to exempt our projects from it, what could they potentially exempt? Or was there some kind of quid pro quo whereby we would have to almost buy and curry some favour with those councils like Broadland and South Norfolk? So I do worry about that. I think rescinding it will improve our relationship with those neighbouring councils, which can only, in my opinion, be a good thing, given that we have just signed a Greater Norwich Local Plan and Greater Norwich Development Plans going forward require the kind of support of all three councils to get things done, the kind of developments that benefit the city of Norwich and its people. So I'm going to be totally voting in favour of this and I would like to thank councillors Davis and Stute for bringing this and ending what is basically a very egregious and a policy that has long outlived its vitality.
I can't read my own writing. Councillor Mike Sands, please.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I can only be thankful that the Green Party weren't in charge of building this swimming pool because it would end up being a mudwallow for hippopotami. I'd like to remind the Green Party that when we had this in planning in April last year, the application for Anglia Square by Western Homes was supported and approved by councillor Galvin, who voted in favour. I'd also like to point out that Lion Homes is not a charitable enterprise. This motion is a cynical last dig at Western Homes. Councillor Davis knows and was privy to this knowledge from the start that there are extraordinary costs involved in developing Anglia Square at which this is directed. Councillor Davis knows that any SIL management is looked at on a case-by-case basis and it would be exceptionally naive to think otherwise. If this council did not support those on low incomes, is the claim, and people in positions of poverty, we would not have maintained a 100% council tax reduction scheme. So quite clearly, we are supporting those sectors of our community who are in hard times. The SIL exemption was for sound reasons. We know that Anglia Square is a site of exceptional development costs due to the massive demolition and preparation that needs to occur before any construction can begin. But the SIL exemption now is purely academic, as the site will achieve 100% SIL, amounting to nothing. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Fulton-McAlister, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor Stute has rightly and accurately summarised my views with my own letter. He may have stumbled over elements of it because of my own typos. If so, I'm sorry to him. But ultimately, I think that context here is really important. We are the Labour Party. We are the political arm of the trade union movement. And the trade union and labour movement has historically had a set way of undertaking decisions. We believe in collective responsibility. It provides stable and firm leadership, which has enabled the Labour Party to be a party of government for the last hundred years and to be the party which has controlled this chamber and delivered for the people of Norwich for the last 80 years in terms of council tenure. Therefore, I have absolutely no regrets in ensuring that this motion is voted down. Ultimately, we are a party which believes in collective responsibility. Sorry, it's my turn, councillor Sands, we heard you. It's my turn. So, you know, I looked sideways and I was there thinking to myself, well, you know, why are they giving money to these fact-out businesses? You know, what is this all about? You know, I couldn't understand why you, as a councillor, were bending over backwards. If you give these developers the opportunity to make more money, they will take that. So what you're saying is Norwich is an easy touch. It's okay, they'll bend over, they'll just give, you know, give you a discount, it's no problem. Of course, they're going to ask for the discount. It's ridiculous to think otherwise. Now, we've got a massive development opportunity happening in the east of the city, in my ward in Lakinham. And the reality is, we've been quite upfront that this needs additional funding. This is going to need support from the government. And I concede today that now, finally, Labour concede that really to develop this, we need government support. And that should have been the position in the beginning. This desperation, this legacy from the previous leader to get Anglia Square built before he left has caused this problem. And it's a joke. And hearing that letter, hearing how you are whipping and threatening each other with removal of the whip because you want to vote in a certain way, while simultaneously mocking us, while simultaneously mocking us that we are...
Councillor Price, if you bear with me, is a bit of a point of order.
Point of order is councillor Price is making allegations of whipping in the Labour...
I'm referring to the letter.
No such whipping is taking place over this issue at all. As councillor Melville talked to us upon that, we had a discussion and we have reached a legal decision. I'm actually completely deaf from whipping.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Sands, you've made your point. Councillor Davis, do you have a point of order as well?
I do. It's a point of clarification. There absolutely was whipping that took place on the SIL exemption motion. I didn't go to the council meeting, neither councillor Stute. I don't believe councillor Hampton did. I was expressly told by the then-leader that if I broke the whip, I would be off the Labour Group. So I sent apologies and I suggested that other members did the same. So there absolutely was whipping.
I think for the purposes of the item we're considering this evening, motion 12A, everything relates to what's happening now, not what's happened or may or may not have happened in 2018. Councillor Price?
Thank you. I was just referring to the opening speech made by the mover of the motion. I was just drawing the point that we are mocked on this side for having an independent thought and to not be whipped. Yet, you know, you're there and you're whipping each other. You know, it's ridiculous. So what I would say is, thank you for bringing this. I think it should never have come in. The nuance of the motion makes it quite clear that we can still exempt certain conditions to help deliver certain technical projects, et cetera. We need to send a message to developers that Norwich is a keen and excellent place to come and develop. It is ripe and we can do it ourselves and we can do it with developers and we shouldn't just be pandering to them for legacy reasons and, you know, to get it built, you know? Let's get the right development that works for Norwich. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do any other members have comments specifically on motion 12A as on the paper today? Thank you. Councillor Hampton?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I just got to pick up on a few points that have been mentioned and especially because I have at this point been mentioned directly or indirectly by name in regards to this. I was a Labour councillor who expressed concerns in 2018 when I was new onto the council. I must have only been on a month or two before this started being discussed within a group, et cetera. Fast forward a few years, I've had quite a bit more experience, briefings on the issues surrounding this and obviously then became a Cabinet member. And as a Cabinet member unexpectedly but correctly, we had to make the decision on the only applications with SIL exemption that have come through so far, which, yeah, was on phase one and phase two of Anglia Square. And so granted that this motion supposedly at least isn't solely about Anglia Square, the preamble in it very heavily focuses on Anglia Square and it is the only occasion which has come forward so far. So I think it is still important to talk about some of the context around that case and to pick up on a point I think councillor Price made, just because developers are going to keep asking and we might get future applications. And councillor Lovett said we don't have to accept them. The criteria are quite clear in the policies. It has to be both bring wider benefits and stack up in terms of viability schemes that really are marginally viable. So as a Cabinet member now, I had to face that decision of obviously comparing it strictly to the policies in front of us, not using this as a proxy for whether we want Anglia Square to go ahead or not, or otherwise face a really real prospect of the developer walking away and us getting no homes whatsoever, none of the wider community benefit that this scheme is going to bring. And it may not be a perfect scheme. I doubt anyone in this chamber thinks that. But on this side of the chamber, we're realistic about the planning and financial backdrop this is taking place against. And we're clear that the reason we have to be even considering this policy and making decisions like we had to in the autumn is the Tories' failure to reform the planning system to make sure councils and communities and, if needed, developers can bring forward a truly affordable, sustainable housing scheme. So let's not let the Tories off the hook with this as usual. So I hope that gives a bit of clarity to the sort of journey I've gone on with this. And I'm not afraid to say that I have changed my stance in some respects as I've learned more and had to deal with some of this a bit more practically and with real consequences. So this motion as it stands tonight, I won't be supporting it.
Any other members wish to comment? Councillor Oliver?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Well, straight from the horse's mouth, i.e. the westernhomes.com website, even the Community Infrastructure Levy, ECR, was not enough to give enough certainty to Western Homes because they say that despite the exemption of 2.3 million covering the first two phases of the development being approved, there's still the remaining tax levy on the final two phases. So what we have in place didn't do the job.
Any other members wish to speak? Councillor Giles?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It may well have not been the intention of the proposer and seconder. However, you know, as resolution 6B is currently drafted, it would suggest that the SIL ECR policy would be limited to 100% social housing schemes. Now, that may well not have been the intention, but as currently drafted, it doesn't say policy compliant or with a certain minimum percentage. I think by passing the motion as it currently is drafted would inadvertently restrict access to SIL exemption, to schemes. to SIL exemption, to schemes that could be brought forward that could deliver a significant percentage of social housing but aren't entirely social housing. That may have been a drafting error or not the intention of the proposer and seconder. I fear that may well be an anticipated consequence, but I might be wrong.
Thank you. Any other members wish to speak? In which case, councillor Davies, could you respond, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. There's been a lot of interesting circular arguments in here tonight. First of all, we've heard that it wasn't brought in specifically for Anglia Square, and then all we've heard is how Anglia Square failed, because we were going to scrap SIL exemption, but actually they were given SIL exemption. None of this makes sense. We've heard how if we scrap SIL exemption, poor people won't get 100% council tax reduction. These are just completely separate plots. Everyone should know that these are completely separate plots we're looking at. A lot of this stuff is completely unlinked. Now, I remember when this first came in, and, you know, all we've heard about from the Labour side is how the Greens are chaotic, but actually, the day that we were asked to come to Cabinet, that was put in councillor Stonehead's portfolio, he had not signed it off, and he hadn't even seen it. Councillor Stonehead, that day, threatened to walk from the Cabinet, and I threatened to too. So I'm not having this fantasy that everything is perfect. One eighth of the Labour councillors signed that letter to the NEC, one quarter of the Labour councillors. This has never been a perfect motion that everyone's supported, never. I think now is the time for us to scrap it. It doesn't say it has to be 100%. All this has done is it's taken it back to the SIL, the SIL that we had before in place. It's not changed anything, it's just removed the ECR, and I think it's time we got behind it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Davies, you asked for it to be recorded, but I need five members to support that. Meet the five there, so. Two meetings in a row, it's a bit names now. That's fine. Okay, thank you. In which case, we'll move to the vote.
Okay, thanks, everyone. I'll call your names out in alphabetical order by surname. If you could say for, against, or abstention clearly into your microphone, thank you. Ackroyd?
Against.
Calvert?
For.
Galvin?
For.
Giles?
Against.
Hampton?
Against.
Haynes?
For.
Oakna? For. Huntley?
Against.
Jones?
Against.
Hendrick?
Susans?
Against.
Schmira?
For.
Stonehead?
Against.
Stutey?
For.
Vaughan Thomas?
Against.
Vivian Thomas?
Against.
Wright?
Against.
Anne Young? For.
Okay, that motion has fallen. Thank you. Right, so the constitution requires that three hours are a convenient point before, and we're now at this two-hour fifty-five mark. Unless a majority of members present vote to continue, the meeting will adjourn immediately. So do any members wish for the meeting to continue at this stage? In which case, thank you very much, and any motions that haven't been dealt with will come back to the next normal meeting of council, which will be June. So thank you very much, and I'll see many of you at the AGM. Thank you.